Open Lands, we're a land trust.
We're a land trust. And she has a presentation and some discussion of course on some property.
I wanted to be able to give you a little bit more of an introduction to me and Utah Open Lands, but unfortunately I have to make another presentation up in Midway. So I'm gonna actually make this really quick, but leave some time for introductions. As I know, I've presented to some of you in the past. Utah Open Lands is a nonprofit land trust. We're not affiliated with the state, but what we do is we protect land throughout the state of Utah for recreational wildlife, farming and ranching. I like to say, you may know us from projects like Bonanza Flat, which I think a lot of people are familiar with, or the High Yee Ranch on your way up to I-80, or even Grand Rapids. We did the trailhead that is there off of Wasatch Boulevard and purchased that property in conjunction with the trust's public lands. What I brought to you tonight is a project that we feel is valuable for several reasons. We are calling it the Cottonwood Heights Bonneville Shoreline Trail as it is within your city limits. It's approximately 26 acres. I know you've received some information in your packet, but we really think that this has some tremendous value from a conservation perspective. We are looking at this as a fee title purchase, which means that the entire property would be acquired. Utah Open Lands would retain a conservation easement on the property to ensure its protection in perpetuity. We would hope that Cottonwood Heights would end up as the owner of the property. But ultimately, we feel that this is something that should come into public ownership. It is a piece of property that we feel is very, very visible. And if you think about Utah and its canyons, it's kind of its calling card from a tourism perspective, but also from a residence perspective, a quality of life perspective. This is one of those properties that's very, very visible. And right now is subject to a development agreement with Cottonwood Heights. The property is made up of two separate parcels owned by two different landowners, but we've been able to work with them together to have the entire parcel as I showed you before. It is along Little Cottonwood Road, Cottonwood Canyon Road. Here are some pictures of property. One of the landowners, the Despain landowner, and then the other, oops. A new slide that I have in my presentation. This shows you approximately where the Bonneville Shoreline Trail goes through the property. But we think there are other recreational access opportunities on this property as well. We would even be looking at whether or not it made sense for any sort of trailhead on this property. The big concern that we have is that we're losing access, but also as you see these lands developed, you also see additional congestion. And again, the scenic beauty and the quality of life is impaired as well. Here's another view of the property. Probably better see it right there on the TV monitor. Looking out at the property, so again, it'd be acquired in fee, has some tremendous views that the public would be available to have. You can see it is currently for sale. We've had two appraisals done on this property. One when we first started talking to these folks in May of 2018. The value determined by an independent qualified appraiser at that time was $3.675 million. We went and applied for some funding from the State Leray McAllister Fund, but we also felt in preparation for going to other funding sources, we were able to acquire a purchase agreement with the landowners that we should get another appraisal. And this one was done in December. And this one has a value of $3.85 million. Cutting to the chase, the land acquisition fee title, if you look at the full value of $3.835, we always ask landowners if they can and are willing to make a contribution because we feel that it's important for them to have some skin in the game. In this particular instance, the landowner is willing to make $835,000 contribution. Since February 14th, when we were able to release, announce to the public that we had this under contract, we raised $5,865. Every dollar that comes in specifically to this campaign from the public will go 100% to the land preservation. This is not somehow funding Utah Open Lands. This would be for the acquisition. And then we did get from the state's Leray McAllister Critical Lands Fund a grant of $500,000. So you can see the remaining funds that are needed are $2,494,135. We will need support from various different agencies, which is why we're coming to Cottonwood Heights tonight with a request for a million dollars. We think that this particular project is somewhat of a cornerstone piece in further protection, both of access and also of other properties for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. We feel that it is also one that is in jeopardy, that could be developed. And that would really be a travesty at the end of the day if what people saw on their way up to the canyons was a significant amount of homes and infrastructure in that particular area. So that, I'm gonna conclude my formal presentation, and I have literally about five minutes for questions and answers. And I apologize for that short time.
What types of things of conservation easement allow you? You talked about a possibly a trailhead?
Yeah, so the conservation easement, our main goal there is the donors that contribute to Utah Open Lands wants to make sure that this land doesn't get swapped out in the future for development or anything like that, and that has happened. There's actually been some landscapes that were legislatively supposed to be protected and have been put up for being swapped out for development. So the conservation easement's main goal is to ensure that once we acquire this piece of property, it is never used for some sort of density, for example. So you can't transfer the density off of this and give it to another property and say, oh, look, but we protected this open space. But what we would wanna do is negotiate with Cottonwood Heights and the other partners, what are some of the appropriate uses for this? All of them being for the public benefit. But a monumental thing that the conservation easement is gonna do is prohibit any future development on the property. So all of that is, to answer your question in a short way, is it's negotiable, except for the fact that this will never be available for development.
Wendy, can you go back to the picture? Uh, the other one. The other one. There you go. Well, this, I mean, if you don't know, if you've not been here, when you're coming around the corner on Wasatch, this is what you see from your car essentially. This is the gateway to our canyons with 2.1 million visitors a year. I don't, I like to say that Cottonwood Heights is just a part, a part of putting this into an easement, but there are lots of other people that are gonna benefit from this, which is why I think Leray McAllister gave us $500,000.
As far as the, I mean, there was about a million and a half dollar gap. Where would that money be coming from, you hope?
So...
I guess, it's hope, I don't know if it's nailed down or not, it's a nice for what?
It's all hope, yes. Basically, we have started the campaign to try and protect this landscape. So what we're looking at is going out and raising funds from a number of different private sources. Many of you may or may not, I guess I'll, to what Utah Open Lands has been able to do. So the Bonanza Flat property, 1,350 acres up in the, at the top of Big Cottonwood Canyon. When that came up, there was a $13 million gap between what the park, City of Park City could pay for the property and what the purchase price was. So Utah Open Lands was able to work with the city and various different stakeholders in terms of agencies and other counties and cities to get about $9, $9.5 million. And then we, working with a group of a lot of other nonprofits, were able to raise about $3.1, $3.2 million from the private sector. So we do know, we did that, I think we were able to announce that in January, and we were able to provide the funds by June 15th. This is gonna be a big ask for sure, but this is something that we're prepared to go out to the community, to different donors, to help us. We'll also be going to different agencies to ask. I can't, I don't know how much they're gonna be willing to give, but certainly what we found in all of these different projects is without the commitment of local communities, it doesn't always come together and it doesn't happen. The landowners are willing to give us until June 1st for us to raise the money. We do have to have commitments or pledges, we call contributions receivable, for half of that amount by March 20th, which is one of the reasons that we're asking for the million dollars from Cottonwood Heights.
Half of the 2.4?
Half of the three total.
The total?
Right, so we got 500 from Leray, a million from you guys. Would bring us to that half, giving us the ability to really jump forward hopefully and raise the rest of the money.
Maybe I'll have, Tim, you wanna speak to budgeting that?
Yeah, so we, we've had some conversations with council about this, but primarily through a process we went through when we acquired, or we submitted a grant application for funding for trail development acquisition for this area. We budgeted that, went through the budget process, and also had the council deliberate on a agreement with the county on those funds that we received. We've looked, Mike has actually looked, and we've talked about the parameters of the agreements we have with the county with the funding that we receive from them. And acquisition of this property meets the parameters of that. So it's already budgeted, as long as the council, majority of the council wants to move forward with this commitment, it's already budgeted and you can move forward with that formally with a letter to you, provided council's comfortable with that. So the process is really, we already have it budgeted, we can commit to this.
We gotta, we gotta match money allocated from the county for certain purposes. This would take a million dollars of that money that is in the budget and, I guess, earmark it.
Yes, if we are unsuccessful, all the money goes back.
Then we'd have to find something else to do with it.
Yes, you'd have to find something else to do with it.
And Mike, where does the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee speak to that? The recommendation?
Yeah, so that was in the, last week or a couple of weeks ago in the council update. Wendy kinda gave the same pitch to the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. They're an advisory committee to make recommendations, and they did recommend that the city utilize the proper funds to find a way to make this contribution. So that recommendation has come to you from the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee at their last meeting in January.
You said it was under development and freeman, pardon me?
There is an act, there is a development application in review for this property.
Which is basically, what did they ask for?
It's a proposal, I think the proposal, as it is today, is an 11 lot subdivision.
And our option agreement does not preclude them from moving forward on development approvals. However, if we get the money first, we have, we're, we have the first right of refusal basically to buy the property.
So our recommendation is that the funding's budgeted. We have the funding that meets the parameters of our agreement. If the council wants to move forward, we would recommend that you let us know right now and we can formalize that commitment in a letter.
I think it's crucial to get that piece right now. These are oceans, really are mountains, I consider are oceans. Sorry, I can't speak very well, but this, this piece, especially going to the canyon like this, is crucial. I'd hate to see that develop. I think the trail, if we can get that trail to go as far as we can, the better we are.
Should we agree?
Couldn't have said it better.
No, I agree with that, so we need a letter, let's get that composed, we're looking for that direction.
Yep, just right here, if you're comfortable.
I believe past discussions, the mayor and council member Bruce are also capable of it, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, we will have to...
Good luck driving the Midway.
Yeah, just a quick question on that. So that piece of property before that...
We'll have to, we'll have to take questions after. This isn't a, this isn't a question and answer. I can, I can talk to you though, before you, before this.
And please email me, easy to find on the...
Alright, thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
The next item up is a presentation on Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Plan. Some Blue Line Design.
I'll give a... If you don't mind, I need a brief introduction of what we're doing here. So Rob is with Blue Line Designs. A number of months ago, we contracted with Blue Line Design. The Bonneville Shoreline Trail Alignment, the trail alignment itself has been well studied, well researched, but the alignment's been in place for a number of years already. So this study does not do anything with the trail alignment itself or where the trail's proposed to go. We have a, you know, a general idea of where that is due to the previous work by the Forest Service and others. What we don't have is, assuming that that trail is able to come to fruition through Cottonwood Heights, we've never carefully studied access to the trail. And trail access, as you would imagine, is critically important. It has a big impact on neighborhoods. So we've contracted with Blue Line Design to do a master plan study of Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access. So we've just, we're using that alignment that's already been defined by, you know, regionally. And we're looking specific to our city where access points could be. Rob will explain kind of the process we've underwent so far. We have an open house this week, so we thought before we go to the open house, we'll provide an update to the council on where we are in this project and what comes next after the open house. Certainly, if there are any questions, you know, the final objective of this will be to come in front of the planning commission and the council with a formalized master plan document for adoption, but we're a few steps ahead of that right now. So we're here to just provide an update on that.
Basically, the access points in Cottonwood Heights to the trail wherever it may be. I mean, you said that alignment has, you said the Forest Service did it?
Yeah, they, they did an environmental impact statement on, on a trail corridor and have kind of mapped out an alignment that works. There's, you know, it's within range, so it's subject to modification, but we know at least generally where that trail has been mapped out to go. So this study doesn't deal with the trail itself, but this is access to the trail. There are a number of challenges with trail development that will go over here, but that's what we're trying to get more information on. We want a good idea of where access will come from, what the impacts of those access points will be, what are the challenges in getting that?
Well, it looks like, yeah, with the discussion we did, that some of it may be across either conservation easements or other property that's owned otherwise.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not all on the Forest Service line.
It, it is, there's, there's private property involved, and I think part of the plan will be to, you know, to make recommendations like that. Obviously, we're limited in what we can do on private property, but that, that doesn't mean we shouldn't, you know, try to get good plans in place if opportunities do become available like, like the item Wendy presented on. So I'll turn it over to Rob now.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, Rob Donigan from Blue Line Designs. Mike kinda got us out of the gate here of what the purpose of my, of the project that we're working on is. So kinda skipping that, that first point up there about project purpose, I think we all know what that is. So going to where we've been and where we're headed. You know, to start off the process, obviously, we wanted to do a needs assessment of understanding, you know, what the needs of the project are as far as, how are we gonna access the Bonneville Shoreline Trail? What has to happen? What are possible locations? We, to start off with, you know, kicked it off with the city at what I'm calling the Steering Committee, which included members of the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee, kind of an internal group. So we had that kickoff meeting, got their feedback, got their input. Actually went out onsite and walked some of these locations with them to, you know, do some, again, preliminary analysis. And then we also did kind of a comparative analysis with other comparable municipalities along the Wasatch Front that have access to trails or the Bonneville Shoreline Trail specifically, to understand how many access points do they have? What do those access points look like? What kind of access points are they? So that, as a basis of making a recommendation to Cottonwood Heights, you know, what, what should those be in Cottonwood Heights? So based on all that, again, having a couple more review meetings with the, what we're calling the Steering Committee, than actually meeting with the Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Committee themselves, and then presenting a version of what we're gonna look at tonight. We've come up with recommended locations or possible locations for two different types of access points. One would be a local access point. It would have minimal, and I'll go into this in more detail in a second, minimal improvements that would really just be for neighborhood use. And then there's, would also be a regional access point. It would be more of your standard trailhead. It would have a parking lot, it would have a restroom, it would have more meaningful signage and wayfinding and things like that. Then we've also worked to take these preliminary goals and objectives and to take a preliminary plan of where these access points could be and take that to the public, that's what the open house will be on Thursday, to get their feedback, to get their concerns, to get their insights of what we're proposing, to make sure that, you know, we are, we are doing the right thing and proposing the right locations. After that, we'll start to synthesize things and finalize that plan in addition to furthering the plan. And we'll look at some of these specific locations and actually do preliminary conceptual design for these proposed trailhead locations to make sure that they are feasible in regards to just site opportunities and constraints specifically, you know, topography, ownership, and different things like that. After we do that, then, like Mike talked about, we'll, you know, wrap it up, synthesize it all into a final proposed master plan document that will be delivered and then adopted by the city council. With that said, I know I'm on a limited timeframe here. This is the overall Bonneville Shoreline Trail Alignment. It's a couple of different colors there. And from, you know, north, just for orientation purposes, north is on your left, south is on your right. So we're going from the gravel pits on the north all the way down to kind of the bend in the road that goes to Little Cottonwood Canyon. From there, you see two different symbols on there that are numbered. It's a little hard to see on that one, easier to see on this one. There are four blue circles, 1, 2, 3, and then number nine. Those would represent possible regional trailhead access locations. And then in between those, we have 4 through 8. Those would represent possible local access points. This is just a similar graphic, just going on a tilted aerial to, to, you know, give you, again, a general idea of where those access points are. Again, 1 through 3 and 9 are reachable, and 4 through 8 are the local access points.
Is 9 actually on that parcel we just looked at, or?
Uh, yes. Yes, we've looked at actually two possible locations for a trailhead in that vicinity. One would be on that, those lanes that we just talked about. There's another opportunity, how feasible it is or not, we'll have to continue to study it, is there are the water tanks that exist right there, just north of that private property. There's already road access in there, you know, it's graded in. We believe that's a, you know, possibility, already existing access up there to a trailhead. Again, this just speaks to giving definitions of what we're proposing to be a local access point, what we're proposing to be a regional access point or a trailhead, and just some of the amenities that would occur in those locations. Obviously, in both locations, we have signage and wayfinding, trash receptacles, benches. But that's, you know, as far as amenities goes, that's all that would happen at that local access point. Again, very minimal. And one thing I do wanna point out, as part of our comparative analysis comparing it to other municipalities, we again looked at location, frequency, and, you know, size of the access points. And so we're recommending as part of this plan that you have local access points, one per two miles. And then as far as regional trailhead access points, one per four miles. So just as a point of reference, from the very north end of Cottonwood Heights, the very south end, the reach that we're looking at is approximately, if a crow flies, it's about three and a half miles. But as you obviously look at, you know, actual trail alignment, you're probably closer to four miles on that. So really, we're showing on our plan more than what we're describing here as far as local access points and regional access points.
Probably the regional would be one, possibly two if they were on the far ends.
Yeah, we definitely think there is opportunity to kind of bookend the system. We also think, based, just based on existing opportunities, there's probably at least one additional. And the benefit of these, obviously, is they do provide, if they're located in the right location, we can provide parking so that as people come from outside of Cottonwood Heights and wanna access the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, they're not parking near local streets and near local neighborhoods and causing conflict there. So providing dedicated, kind of separated parking areas in those locations. Furthermore, the amenities at those locations would be greater. We again have restrooms, pavilions, parking lot, obviously, drinking fountains, bike repair stations, all that kind of things to amenitize those trailheads. Then just flipping through some of the detail, this is the very north end sites 1 and 2, one being the gravel pit. Again, whatever development occurs there, hopefully it would accommodate or include a trailhead access point to the north end of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail as it runs through Cottonwood Heights. Number two is one of these that, that maybe, you know, as you look at the distance, isn't necessarily required, but if you look at the opportunity, there is an existing pull-off there as you go up the canyon. The Bonneville Shoreline Trail is gonna pass through that area. How it gets across the road, the canyon there, is yet to be determined, but we believe there is an opportunity here, potentially again, maybe have a smaller trailhead access point there. This is one that's, that's been identified in the past. There is the existing trailhead location up in the neighborhood, Ferguson Canyon Trailhead. This is closer to Wasatch further down the hill. As you enter into that neighborhood, there's an open undeveloped piece of land there that has been identified as a potential trailhead location. Again, it'd be on the fringe of the neighborhood, you'd be able to provide parking. It's not right, obviously, right on the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, but you'd have to hike up through the neighborhood a little bit. It would take that parking that I believe is a, is an issue or concern within that existing neighborhood and move it down the hill closer to Wasatch and get it out to the neighborhood. These next, you know, five local access points, these are essentially mostly dead-end roads or bulbouts or cul-de-sacs that currently have open access to the proposed Bonneville Shoreline Trail Alignment. Most of these obviously have ownership issues, would be crossing privately owned property. So that would be, have, have to be dealt with. But we believe there are opportunities here and these access points are necessary. Again, just if, you know, you live down the street, you just wanna go up to the trail, you don't have to drive your car to one of these parking lots or trailheads we've talked about. You can just walk to the end of the street and, and get on an identified trail, an allowed trail, access to Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And so these are at, again, if you know the area, Mountain Cove Circle, I'm calling it 8335 South, there may be a different name for that street, and then Golden Oaks Drive are those three that were shown there. The last two, as we get to the, kind of the end of that, that neighborhood, again, one is, is a, it's an elbow or a bulb as you go along King Hill's Drive there. And then the other one, number eight, is actually on the end of that cul-de-sac in King Hill's Place. Again, there's pros and cons to each of those that we're studying and evaluating. Number eight specifically, there's a bit of grade that you'd have to deal with there, and the proximity of the homes to where the access point would be is a little bit tighter there. So again, when it all comes, you know, comes down to it, we'll evaluate all the, all the access points we're, we're showing and recommend to go where we think is the best option for you. And then number nine is the one we already talked about, again, looking at both the water tank site and then also the private property location that was discussed earlier as a regional access. I won't go through these in detail, but these are our draft goals and objectives. It's pretty straightforward. Really, the goal is to provide meaningful and usable and safe access points to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. That's really the purpose of the project. And then the objectives just support that. You know, talking about quantity and quality and amenities that would occur involving the public, providing signage and wayfinding and that kind of thing as far as the objectives go.
I guess my, my question, 1.2, 1.3...
Yep.
Are talking about a minimum of two and a minimum of three local access points. That come, that's five seems like a lot across that whole area. I think if you do the two regionals, you're doing, I don't know, it seems like you might wanna adjust that.
It wouldn't double up. I mean, since, so if you have a regional...
I read that as five spots to access across the thing, and that seems a lot, a lot more dense than what your, your other slide said. I guess I just make sure that they comport or they...
Right.
Maybe it's just... Maybe it's just a wording issue.
I think some of it at this point too is, for regional, there, there are opportunities available with land ownership and, again, like Utopia Lands presented, willing sellers. For the local access, we, we identified through this process, a number of spots that might work. That doesn't mean they all have to, that doesn't mean they all will. So I think the minimums there are based on the recommendations of one, you know, one per mile and one per two miles.
Well, that's what I said, if the total trail, even the trail mileage is, you said, four or five, four or five, then, I mean, you almost get there with just the regionals. So that's right, and the, the three seems like a lot. I guess, if I was up there and I was reading and said, well, you want three of these right in my neighborhood, I, I wouldn't mind one or two maybe. When I see a minimum of three, we, we may decide that three is a really great number because it works awesomely. That's, that's my only.
Sure.
Comment.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
And something we'd look forward to is the feedback we get from the public, both through the open house and as we take this forward for a formal public comment, and this becomes a plan, and that's the kind of thing that can be kind of fleshed out at that point.
So the Big Cottonwood, that is the main issue getting you across Big Cottonwood, right?
Well, not necessarily of our project, like Mike was saying, that we're just looking at access points, not necessarily how the trail is gonna get across that though.
That's the major issue.
That is a ma, that is a major issue, yes.
Is there any proposal of what could be done there without huge expenditure of a?
Well, go ahead and qualify.
What, what huge is? I don't know, I'll let Mike answer that question.
Not that I'm aware of, again, I think that's something we would, you know, if there becomes an opportunity, we can start building out that trail, you know, we'd have to refine.
Cross that originally.
Maybe literally. But yeah, to, to no greater extent.
But it is.
That's the only thing you jumped out at.
Question I have on the open house this Thursday, can you talk a little bit about the format and what, how you're really going to engage the public? We've been advertising it, obviously, and we have a good turnout, but you could explain a little bit about what your plans are there.
Yeah, so as an open house format, we essentially, that's what these slides and boards were, were created for, is that open house. And so what you see here is what will be present, well, essentially presenting, what will be available for the public to look at and, and engage with us as far as creating comment or asking questions. There will not be a formal presentation, it'll just be for people to, to walk through, look at what we're, what we have for them to digest and to engage us in.
And so their input will be discussion and then you'll take notes?
We will have comment forms, again, and, and I will reemphasize to everyone that I talk to and, and as people come in, in the door, we should have someone greet them to kind of give them the layout, lay the land there. But that any verbal discussion or, or comment cannot be relied upon. And so that any comments that they want documented and, and to be considered will have to be written down on the comment form.
Let me ask, again, on the one, two, one, three, regional and local are not exclusive of each other, they're supposed to be together. Because you have a regional, that doesn't mean you shouldn't have some locals that are close by, is that a better reading of that?
Correct. Because again, they do serve.
Same ones you have as far as how the numbers, I think you shoot high and then what you end up with maybe is if we've got opportunities. But you don't want to overburden an area.
And that's always a struggle, as we did a comparative analysis. You know, it just goes down to kind of best practice and standards and, and not overburdening the city and, and requiring too much infrastructure as far as these access points go, but again, doing less comparative studies.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is a review of our business meeting agenda. All the pledges and agents, welcome, and then Tim will introduce our USA, UFA Assistant Chief Riley Pilgrim.
May I comment on that? He's here.
I'm here.
So this is Riley.
Hello.
Chief, Chief Pilgrim, so it's good to have him here, and I will say a few words out there, but we're happy to have him here. I had a chance to sit down with him recently, and, and he sat down with the mayor and myself and Chief Russo and others. Happy, happy you're here and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We will do citizen comments as usual, and then our action items. The first one is ordinance three forty, granting a telecommunications franchise to Utopia. And I'm assuming that's because they have some minimal work that occurs in our city, they need a franchise payment.
Uh, yes, they, they have requested a fiber cable franchise through the city, and I don't know how much work they need, need to do for their system, but it's on the same basis as the other providers that we've granted similar franchises to over the past few years.
Any questions on that? The other is a point for the historic committee, is that just to appoint Mr. Peterson to that?
Yes, and he, he's someone I've interviewed recently. I think he has a, would be a really good fit particularly because of his involvement in working at Brighton High School and also some of his work with committees for the school. Our historic committee is really looking at a big project on archiving some of the information on Brighton High School. I think he's gonna be a great asset to that, so I'm recommending that he be appointed.
He's fantastic, very, it's great.
I have nothing to do with wrestling. Um, resolutions twenty twenty oh five and oh six are similar. Tim, you wanna do a brief rundown of those?
Yeah, so the, you probably recall, we went, we entered into some interlocal, or we'll be entering into the agreements. We applied for grant funds for two projects. One is on the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail for wayfinding and signage for that. That's your first consideration of the resolution, which is our interlo, interlocal Salt Lake County. And then the second, as you recall, is the track funding that we received for installing root barrier systems and doing some improvements to the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail. We were informed that we received the grant funding. The first one was forty-three thousand, the other one was for eighty-three thousand, a little more than eighty-three thousand. And so these are the formal agreements to receive the funds and move forward with those projects through the track program.
And most of those repairs are the ones that are just down there, west of thirty-third East Drive, right?
Yeah.
They go down and past Market Street, the old.
Yes, correct, that's where a lot of them are. Do you, Matt and I, when we were getting ready to apply for the grant, walked to that, and there's some pretty significant needs improvement in the committee, fortunately, this was an important project, so they funded it, so.
I'm assuming the wayfinding is probably along the entire length of the trail from the, from the hollowed out of the mountain canyon?
I believe that's correct.
Right.
As far as we can carry the funds, yes.
Any questions? Okay. And we will come back and put Matt back on the hot seat. He was going to discuss our five-year road improvement plan.
Yeah.
Let, let, let me start.
No.
May I give an introduction?
No, yes, go ahead.
Take as long as you want.
Yeah, take as long as you need. I'm, I'm here all night.
Part of the reason we are putting this on the agenda is, as we move towards a consideration of next year's budget, there are a number of projects that we, that go beyond just one or two years, we have five-year plans. We have a new council member that is with us as well. So we thought it would be really important, as we move towards the budget process, to let you look at what we've been, what we've accomplished and what we're doing with the five-year plan related to this, and then talk about what we're looking at for recommended funding during this upcoming budget process. So that's the reason why it's on here. Obviously, two of you have seen this plan before, but I think it's important that we remember this as we move into the budget process, so that's why this is on the agenda.
Christine may have memorized it, but I didn't talk to you. So refresher's good.
Yeah, what he said. Just to kind of go with that, just give you a quick update, like I said, re-education for some, new information for others. Want to get a, take this opportunity to kind of share where we are. Bingo. This is just a quick overview, when we talk about the five-year maintenance plan, you'll notice that each one of the roads in the city are highlighted with a color. Each one of those colors corresponds to a fiscal year. We'll get into a little more detail on that. But if you notice, every road in the city receives some sort of a treatment for surface, a service treatment or in some cases a reconstruction, depending on the severity of the distress that happens in the road. So this is just a brief overview of what the plan actually looks like. You can't really read it, I think I sent out at one point, all of you have received this plan, but I may need to send it out again, just as a refresher.
And the last slide has a.
Yeah, it's a bit larger on there, but this covers.
The red is all the ones that should have been.
Red is the first last year, and then we're kind of gonna move through the, we're moving through our system. So this is what we work off of when we come to you with budgets, when we come to you with projects, this is the plan that we're working off of. Also, this plan was adopted and accepted by the city council back in the eighteen budget, eighteen, nineteen budget. Just to.
Every public street.
Every public street out there has some sort of a treatment. Now, that's not saying it's reconstructed, that's not saying it's surfaced, it may be a crack seal, that all it needs is a crack seal project. It just depends on the treatment needed to take, to, to maintain it either at status quo or if it's really distressed, to raise it and bring it up. Little history on this, city council did approve the pavement plan update that we've done. There was a residents committee that was formed to guide the development of the plan. The city council actually asked a, a group of residents to come in and give input on the development of the plan, so that we knew where we were going. The original plan, now this is where we ran into some, some snags with the original plan and where we are today. So let me kind of give you a, a really quick, brief history of that. The original plan that was presented to the council took into account everything, such as curb and gutter, all your cross gutters, storm drains, any improvements for sidewalks for ADA, active transportations, pavement markings, drainage, the work. So as you can tell, it was a, the, the Cadillac of all maintenance plans. The estimated cost on that that was presented in the original plan was a little over three point five million a year for the next, you know, twenty years, if you will. This was a hard number to swallow for the council and for the staff, we just weren't comfortable giving that. And the reason it was such a high number, it gave an estimated what we call the pavement condition index. And I, do I need to explain pavement condition? I really.
Unfortunately, I know too much about this.
Okay.
I have to do it in my own company, the crack sealed, and then completely.
Okay, yeah.
The concrete lasts a lot longer, so, I mean.
PCI on concrete's always.
Right.
So this is the pavement condition index, and what that does, it's a grade of your, of your pavement. Basically, it goes from a grade F to a grade A. Eighty-eight is a solid B plus, if you will, if you were to put it on a grading chart. That's an excellent level of service for a road. The three point five million gave you that. Roads are okay, and this is, this is where we have to say, a C-grade road, there's nothing wrong with it. It doesn't look pretty, it's not the most gorgeous thing in the world, and we're talking about roads, so you're kind of in my business, I think roads are pretty and not pretty. A C-grade road, if you will, a fifty-five above is not a bad road, it's not the worst condition in the world. It needs work, it can quickly go downhill if you don't take care of it. But the original study that was done had us raising everything to an eighty-eight and above, which was a huge ask, is a very large number and, and in our opinion was not achievable based on budget that we were sitting at. So just to give you an idea on the pavement history and where we are. In two thousand eight, the average PCI for our roads, we have a study done on all the roads. The average PCI was about a seventy-eight. And we spent that year on overlays and various items, about one point one million dollars. And you can see as you're going down the list where the PCI has gone, it steadily decreased. And if you'll notice, there were a few jumps, but the number has gone up and down and up and down as far as budget is concerned. There was a two million dollar bump in there in two thousand eleven, I'm honestly, I wasn't here, so I'm not sure where that big bump came from. But it's.
Probably a legislative grant for a project.
Which, they don't give the STP grants for maintenance, so I'm not sure where that, honestly. Yeah, just new construction based on capacities and widening, so I'm not sure where that number actually came from. But there was a big bump, I'd have to turn, and I can do a little more research on the history of that, but.
We, we've done it for Union a couple times, and that was some grant money, so it may not have been STP, it may have been something else.
All right, so, and, and you can kind of see, the PCI continues to decrease as we're going along, but there's somewhat, there is a correlation there with the amount of maintenance that's going on. Now, I said a sixty, fifty-five, sixty, those numbers, there's nothing wrong with those numbers. As long as you're at least maintaining those numbers and you're, 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 you're working to keep that number up there. Now, there are some roads, and I'm sure the public will tell you, there are some roads that are about a fifteen, you know, whatever you will. There are very low roads out there, but this is an average overall in our city. And that's what we try to do, is maintain an average overall in the city. So this is where it's gone, and in two thousand eighteen, we spent roughly one point, uh, one point one million dollars on some road work. And one of those in there, I do know, is one of, is one of the STPs. So I apologize for that, that is in there. But you can see where the numbers are going. Now, that's a little bit of the history, you can see the PCI index is slowly decreasing. But in, you'll see also that in two thousand eighteen in there, it sort of levels out and it starts to creep back up a little bit. Now, that creeping, if you will, is based on our projection on what we're asking the city council each year to budget to help us keep that number going up. It's a slow rise, it's nothing spectacular. But it does, like I said, and if you'll remember the map, it gives a treatment on every single road in the city. Also, I need to say, it's not ju, this is just, this is a five-year rotation plan. At the end of five years, it doesn't stop. Next year, I'm gonna bring to you the updated five-year rotation plan, and you're gonna see how this thing continues to roll. We have to continue to invest in maintenance in the roads. If we don't, we're gonna end up where we are on some of these older neighborhoods where they're completely, they're just, they're, they, I, you can't do any sort of maintenance on them to help them. You've gone from about seventy-five cents a square foot to maintain them to about five dollars and fifty cents a square foot to reconstruct it. It's a big jump when you start playing with these numbers. Okay, so this is that chart over time, just to kind of give you a visual. The red line is the PCI, and you can see how that, when we hit about two thousand eighteen, we're slowly creeping up. Nothing spectacular, but our average is staying up and above sixty, based on what we've asked for. We're asking, go ahead, Jill. We're asking for roughly about one point seven, one point five to one point seven million dollars annually. This, to give you an idea, was the first year, on the map, it's the red on our map. This was the first year that the council approved this, when they first looked at this for the budget and the five-year plan. And this is just to let you know what we've done with those funds, so you can have an idea of where we're going. We did a great deal of slurry seal in various residential neighborhoods. We did about, we did some chip seals, what that is, is just a heavier, heavier seal coating that goes on, we did it on some of the main roads, Greenfield Way from. We did it on some of the main roads, Greenfield Way, for instance, going through in thirty-five hundred east. There is also a number in the budget where we go the year before and we prep the next set of roads. And that's with crack seals, um, pothole repairs, skin patching, and we spent this last, this last, uh, in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, we spent two hundred thousand dollars prepping for this year that we're going into and we rebuilt Park Center Drive. And we did that for about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that budget year. You budgeted, I believe, eight hundred and sixty thousand, um, so we came in pretty close to our budgeted number on this. Next slide, this is where we are, seven thousand, we came in at about a hundred and sixty-three, didn't do too shabby on that. We have opening a bid on Thursday afternoon for Scottish Drive Neighborhood. That's the neighborhood where you've also allotted an, 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 an extra hundred and eighty thousand dollars for stormwater work in that neighborhood. So Scottish Drive is on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty plan, it was in there originally, we didn't jump it up, it has been in there from day one and we're, and we're opening that bid on Thursday. And then this year, at when we've, after we're done opening Scottish Drive, we plan to put out in March the slurry seals for various residential neighborhoods and crack seals, about four million square feet. So we're gonna double the amount we did last year. And so we'll be doing that this summer. So we're getting all of these projects at the end of the budget year, but in the summer of that budget year. So, you budgeted, um, and allotted this last year about one point six million dollars and we're looking, we're keeping it in that range, we're keeping it in the budget that was allotted and moving forward and then we'll be raising, we'll be reevaluating our PCI index on our roads and going forward. This didn't show up that much better, did it, so I apologize. But in the twenty eight, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty is where we are, like I said, one point six million dollars. There is, uh, the Parker Drive Neighborhoods, thirteen hundred east, seventeen hundred east, twenty-seven and twenty-three hundred surrounding neighborhoods, thirty-five hundred east, and then there's prep work for next year's budgets. We are doing Scottish Drive and we've already done the thirtieth east, um, project that was on there. So we'll be finishing this year up, this summer, by around the first part of July. Scottish Drive may stretch past July, um, but we will be under contract, so as far as the budget is concerned, we've talked to Scott, we can carry that through this budget into the next one without affecting.
The, the blue area shall have been done by.
By the end of July, yeah, yeah, it should be done in that neighborhood by the end of summer.
So Matt, how do we work in scoring grain on this, I thought those were two separate issues, they're not?
They are, Scottish Drive is a, if, if you'll recall, we had a few issues on Scottish Drive and we looked at it and decided, let's, while we.
While we're there.
While we're there, we're tearing up Scottish Drive, we're not, we're not giving it a surface, we're taking the thing completely off down to subgrade, compacting some new curving gutter where it's needed, new cross gutters that are needed in there, some of the ADA ramps need to be brought up to code, so we'll be do, we'll be doing all that work and as long as we've got the surface off, we're gonna go ahead and do this. So, any of these projects, we, we will be looking at, we, we, we have two components. Ours, the storm water, is our only utility in the roads. We also work with the other utilities, letting them know we're doing this, if they have any repairs, the water company knows and they haven't indicated they have any repairs they need to do, as well as the sewer doesn't have any repairs. Yeah, well, as soon as we break, something breaks, for sure, they'll come cut the roads up and, well, that's the name of the game, I'm not gonna, I can't.
So in this blue area, it's got a gambit of what you.
Yeah, there'll be slurry seals, some of those will be crack seals only, um, some of those might be a.
Is that in this presentation?
No, the, I, I, we're getting, we're going out and getting those taken care of in the next couple of weeks, so we can put the bid out for what we are actually looking for.
Does the oil prices obviously change some of this, right?
Yeah.
How much does that fluctuate if, if the gas goes up above?
We usually, we will lock it into a contract, so whatever is, we can lock it in, typically, they'll give us a sixty day. They'll say, the bid from this point to here, it's good, now, if the contract starts, it will. Start the contract as well, so the bid will typically stay locked in for sixty days, if we wait longer than that, they'll come back and say, look, we've got to do this. And a lot of times, some contracts will be written with, uh, with the, uh, the consumer price index. Get it locked in, now, if the price drops, no one's ever changed the.
Yeah, I know.
Changed the contract to go lower, but they've always been willing to go higher, but they are willing to lock in, um, right now.
When do they fire up the furnaces on those, usually typically?
Well, the asphalt, uh, will start up, well, they're running asphalt plants right now, but the bigger ones, usually in the spring, first, mid, mid, uh, March, somewhere in there, they'll really get them all going.
Start.
The slurries are a little different, they're not a hot mix, they're a cold, they're a cold, uh, oil, uh, so that, the temperature of the road is what.
What dictates.
Dictates that, usually the warmer, the better, that's why we kinda like to do these in the summer, the crack sealing in the winter. That's why you see us going out and doing the crack sealing in October, November, December and then, so we've kinda dragged the project out over a long time to make sure we're getting the optimal times to do those projects. Um, so in a nutshell, that's what we're doing and this is the plan we're following. We are now going, like I said, we'll be bidding out the, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty next month and once we have, once we know where the council sits, we've asked for one point seven million dollars. We have tried to put in inflationary rate in each one of these, so we feel comfortable with our numbers. So we'll be looking at about one point seven million dollars on this budget coming up and we're trying to hold as we presented that to the council two years ago, holding, not trying not to go above the one point seven million dollars, discounting the inflation of, you know.
Matt, how many new roads do we put in a year, do you think?
We don't, we don't do a lot of new roads, I mean, we.
So we basically got what we've got.
We've got what we've got, we're not building anything grandiose.
With, and with the exception of if there's development that requires a public road in it, um, that's, that's our.
Watson Hollow, yeah, Watson Hollow was built, it's a short cul-de-sac. I mean, some of the bigger ones that were built, Gibernet's private, so we don't work on that, but we're, and Mike can talk to this a little bit more, but our city is, we're doing a lot of infill now, so our roads that we're building are being built by development. We'll take over when they're done, but ours right now is trying to take care of what we already own and keep things rolling.
The reason I mention that, somebody mentioned about how cities are going bankrupt trying to keep track of the roads and I, I, I think that, I, I thought we were pretty much built out as far as most of our roads and then. I know, we, we, I live on a private lane, we have to take care of that private lane and we, everything, ours is a microcosm of what we're doing here.
Right.
And it's, if you don't maintain it, you lose it completely.
Right.
And once it allocators, you're pretty much dead.
Yeah, if it starts to allocate or too much, usually it's, it's an indication you've lost it.
Very interesting system, I love, I love.
So, and you'll also see on there, there's gonna be some recommendations that will come forward that we need to make adjustments to next year and the year after, for instance, on Highland, we just rebuilt Highland, um, it's a brand new road, you know, they put a big cut in the middle of it, but that one's gonna be coming back to you at some point here in the next year or so for a surface treatment. You're gonna look at me like I'm crazy because there's nothing really wrong with it, but if you don't change the oil on a car, you're gonna have problems. It doesn't matter how new it is, you gotta take care of these things. So, this is our plan, this is what we're working off of.
You know, Brad had talked to us about this and he talked about if you can do something, just a couple, some very inexpensive treatments, even a couple of years, you can maintain the, uh, something discussed, the oil content.
Yeah, you have to.
And it keeps it.
You have to keep wetting the surface.
Keeps that PCI, PCI up a lot longer and those are a lot cheaper than.
Yeah, when you're paying fifty cents a square foot versus reconstructing it, it's a lot, it's a big number, one point seven million dollars is a big number, but we're looking at, you know, about four million dollars, four million square feet of work and then some overlays that are necessary because we've gotta get in front of these things.
What, uh, what do you, what do our neighbors spend, you know, annually, on, on roads like Holiday and, don't you guys have little powwows?
Little powwows with them, no, don't.
Yeah, the public works.
I mean, I mean, other than, I mean, like on thirty East, we should obviously cross over with Holiday because they have a quarter of a, I know we work with Midvale when we need parts because again, same thing, they, they, they have half, but we try to coordinate those things together.
I don't know a number comparison off the top of my head, but coming from another community, they have similar plans of five-year plans where they're projecting what needs to be done and doing the same type of things, slurry seals, chip seals and so it's fairly common, I just don't know if the numbers are compared.
Matt, we did it out in three, three of the main ones, two bid this, as far as to lay it down.
You mean, bid it out?
Who we bid, who, who we.
It goes out, it goes out for public bid, there's certain companies that will do certain jobs, there's like three of them that'll always bid on the slurries.
In the last five years, so how many different companies have we?
It's usually, well, that we've used, we've used since I've been here for the reconstructions, two companies have won the overlay. It, it goes out for public, but it's usually, there, it's, there's the big four that's out there in Utah that will usually take these jobs. You won't get the bigger national firms because.
Those are the big ones for here.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're well, well-known in Utah.
Hopefully you get competitors.
Well, we've had, the four of them have picked up plans for the Scottish Drive, so. Any questions other than?
No, I'll be excited to see that.
I'll find out some information on neighboring cities and have that, so you guys, yep.
Yeah, it, yeah, that, that one can be, I know, for example, it's been five or six years ago, Holiday didn't like close me in or bond because they had, they had not, not enough kind of bill and they had, they had a lot.
It's mostly the cost per mile you have to look at, I mean, obviously there's, so, we'll take a look at that and I'll get a point.
Because I got to drive to it every day and visit my parents. Um, alright, um, any more questions for Matt?
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, review of the calendar, uh, Phil Tespol is, uh, still slated for the fourteenth, um.
I just haven't gotten an update, where, where we reached out to the schools and.
We have, um, I don't have the status on what we're doing or what the schools are actually doing as far as the outreach with the students and the credits, but we have reached out to them on that, I can give you more information on that. As far as the marketing side of things, we have reached out also on utilizing the plans in the build wars and that's going to happen as it gets closer. So, anyway, that, that is occurring, but we're making good progress, so.
Okay, um, the budget work session, our, our next one, oh, that, that's with the entire council.
That's the first, yeah.
Okay.
That's now including our, our, our committee work.
Jury committee work.
Yeah.
April twenty-second, twenty-fourth, uh, it was a mid-year down at St. George, I have not looked, they posted any kind of agenda yet.
Uh, they've announced a couple of the main speakers, but not any agenda.
Um, let, uh, can know if you're planning or not be planning different groups.
Yeah, if you wanna go, let me know, I'm gonna get you registered and get your hotel room. I, I did find out that the city manager meetings are the twentieth and twenty-first before that.
Yeah, they usually are the Monday, Tuesday.
And you notice what we have on the twenty-third, so it looks like it'll be the city manager meeting on, on those.
You can't move it to the, there you can.
Potentially could move it to the twenty-eighth, we'll have to talk about that, but maybe, we'll see.
Okay, uh.
Is the U S R, is the UAC meeting going to be concurrent or, or just for that one year, does that not happen?
Oh, I don't.
It has a situation, has the first, uh, the meeting I went to at St. George.
Yeah, that's never really, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, they, they could, that was, that was, yeah, that was different down that time. Um, May fifth is when we would have a tentative budget out for, that we would have for public review. Um, June second is, uh, public hearing on that budget with potential adoption on the sixteenth to make it before the twentieth or the twenty-first, I think is a statutory requirement for us to have a budget. Um, the only potential change there would if we did a prudent taxation, but so far the discussion has not led towards that type of a, uh, that type of a need, so we should probably have the budget done, uh, by the sixteenth of June. Is there anything else anyone has? We've got a, uh, hopefully short post-session before our regular business meetings, if we have anything else that we want to talk about. Okay, I will entertain a motion to this post-meeting is for litigation and personnel.
Litigation.
One second.
You're sorry. We have made motion.
Sorry.
That's what you're suggesting.
I mean, have a meeting open, or close the open meeting and open the closed.